Give me a second. Good morning, Vice Chair Oden. We are ready whenever you are.
We'll call this meeting to order. Good morning, everyone. The regular meeting of the Desert Community College District Board of Trustees is now called to order at 9:30. You may join today's meeting in person or join via Zoom webinar. These links are accessible by visiting the College of the Desert homepage. We will now proceed with roll call.
I'd like to inform the board that trustee Kineman and trustee Perez have informed us they will not be here today. Trustee Sanchez Fulton? Trustee Meyer? Trustee Oden?
President. At this time, we'll ask trustees Sanchez Fulton to lead us in the plaque list. Congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it's a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now have the swearing in of our new student trustee, Nusa James. At this time, we'd like to welcome Nusa and raise your right hand and repeat after me to take the overball. I can state her name. Nusa, I'm least clear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and to the Constitution of the State of California. I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of debate. And that I will will and faithfully discharge the duties of my job about the
Your sister traveled all the way from Michigan to have that moment, so I wanted to make sure that she got that picture. She said it's gonna go viral, so.
Pursuant to government section 549, 54.2, Division B 2, the board may take action on items of business not appearing on the proposed agenda. Upon a determination by a two-thirds vote of the board, or if less than two-thirds of the members present, a unanimous vote of those present, that there is a need to take immediate action and that the need of that action came to the attention of the local agencies subsequent to the agenda being posted as specified. Confirmation of the agenda. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions to the agenda for June the 12th, 2025? Seeing none, the agenda stands as amended. Public comments. Request to address the Board of Trustees regarding regular board items. Remote participation is allowed and will be accepted in person by email to opt@collegeofthedesert.edu during the regular meeting and submitted for record, or by using the raise your hand function by joining the Zoom link pursuant to the administrative procedure 2345. Each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes per topic. Fifteen minutes shall be the maximum time allotted for public speakers on any given subject regardless of the number of speakers at any one time at a board meeting. At the discretion of the majority of the board, these limits may be exceeded. All comments must be submitted or brought forward prior to the end of the public comment section. As an additional note, this item is intended for members of the publisher wish to speak regarding regular board agenda items. An opportunity to address the board on matters not related to the agenda will be available during the item 19.01 at today's agenda. Public comments.
Vice Chair Oden, at this time, we have received one request to address the board from Armando Robles, and this is regarding agenda item 9.01, Board Policy 2750, first reading.
Good morning, board. I feel compelled to make this public comment following an email exchange I had with the president's office this morning concerning item 9.01 and Board Policy 2750. Board Policy 2750 references California Government Code 1064, which was last amended in 2012, and reads, no member of the governing, sorry, no member of the governing board of a school district or a community college district shall be absent from the state for more than 60 days except in any of the following situations. Then it goes on to list the qualifying exceptions. The attached redlined Board Policy 2750 on today's agenda reads, no member of the board shall be absent from the state for more than 60 consecutive days except in any of the following situations. And then it goes on. The addition of the word consecutive significantly changes the meaning of the not local college policy, not even California Education Code, but the statewide government code for all elected officials. Assuming this was just simply a minor oversight, I informed the president's office and got a surprising response that the policy had, quote, "passed legal review," unquote, and would go forward as presented. That was interesting. The attachment is already different than the version presented to the College Planning Council on March 13th, which correctly omitted the word consecutive. It then struck me as odd that there was a three-month delay in bringing up this particular policy when all of the other policies presented at that March CPC meeting have already completed their board approval process for update. Why was this particular policy delayed? If there was a change from the version presented at CPC, why should that not have been communicated to the campus via the shared governance process as required by BP 2410? In that same BP, it states that board policies are based in part on recommendations from CCLC, the California Community College, the, sorry, the, CCLC, we all know what it is. But CCLC's recommended version of BP 2750 also omits the word consecutive. So why and when was this legal review conducted? Any one of these kind of weird situations would be just coincidence, but everything together starts to feel odd at best and intentional at worst. I would expect our board to adhere to government codes as provided by the state verbatim without any unnecessary language, and in my experience, I find it odd that any legal counsel would allow a district to add frivolous language to what is otherwise a pretty clearly written government code, particularly when the policy in question is one that outlines how elected officials should be trusted to remain in their representative district. I trust the board will do the proper thing and review the policy to ensure full legal compliance, but I encourage voters to pay attention because these are your representatives. Thank you.
And thank you, Armando. Are there any others?
Vice Chair Oden, I'm gonna take a quick look here on Zoom to see if anyone has raised their hand, and it looks like they haven't, and no other requests have received via email or in person, so we do not have any additional requests at this time.
All right, at this time, we will close public comments.
Look update, the Office of the President has prepared plaques to recognize and thank Kayden Olson and Felipe Robles for their student leadership. Over the past year, Kayden has served as the Ascot President and Felipe as the student trustee. We are grateful for their service, advocacy, and on behalf of their peers, we are pleased to present to them these tokens, small tokens of appreciation, and we're really thankful for all you've done for us. So can you come up and receive your plaques, please? I'll call on a, I will call on trustee, I'm sorry, I'll call on Dean Carlos Maldonado if he has any additional comments.
Thank you, President Martinez Garcia, for the opportunity to recognize these student leaders. I'd like to start with recognizing the Ascot President Kayden Olson, and I'd be so bold as to ask you to come to the podium one last time, or at least in this role, if you would, while I read these remarks. Kayden, your leadership this year has been a powerful example of courage, growth, and commitment. From the beginning of your term to now, you've demonstrated remarkable growth in your leadership style, becoming more strategic, confident, and grounded in your purpose. Your passion for ensuring that all students, including those in dual enrollment programs, have a voice at the table has elevated student representation across the college. You've championed student participation in shared governance and consistently worked to keep your fellow student leaders engaged and informed. Perhaps most notably, you've shown the courage to have difficult conversations, especially with individuals in positions of power, always guided by your belief that students deserve to be heard. Your integrity and advocacy have made a lasting impact, and we truly appreciate your service to the district. So, thank you, Kayden. I would also ask Felipe to come to the podium, if you will. I don't think you've actually been on that side yet, so it's a different view for you perhaps. Felipe, your passionate service and meaningful contributions throughout the year have left a lasting mark on this district. Your deep love for the arts has brought a creative and human-centered perspective to your leadership, reminding us the power of expression and the importance of diverse voices in education. You've been a tireless advocate for non-traditional students, ensuring their unique experiences and challenges are represented in decision-making spaces. You've also been a constant source of support for your fellow student leaders, always showing up even when balancing competing priorities. You did it all with a smile, a positive attitude, and a commitment to lifting others up. Whether it was a meeting, a campus event, or a long day of travel, you brought the energy, raised the hype, and helped make the experience better for everyone around you, even when it wasn't easy. Thank you for your leadership, your heart, and your unwavering dedication to students. We're better because of you, so thank you for your service.
So I'd like to call on Acting Vice President Wilson to introduce our new employees.
There we go. Good morning. Our new employee appointments for this month are Sabrina Diaz, Laboratory Specialist for Science, Emmanuel Garcia Cordova, Accounting Specialist, Mariela Mora, Cal Works Assistant, Miguel Ruvacaba Castaneda, a Mission and Records Specialist, Skylar Santayanas, Student Center Assistant, and Juhan Wang, Research Analyst.
Thank you, Acting Vice President Wilson, and congratulations to our newest employee appointment. Proclamation for Pride Month.
It's my pleasure, honor to introduce to you today Cody McCabe and a group of students who will be reading the proclamation. Cody, as you know, is a key figure, a key support figure, I should say, and a pillar for our LGBTQ students here at COD. We're very proud to have him and the students here today.
We good?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, good morning, again, everybody. I'm very proud to be representing the Gender and Sexual Diversity Pride Center here today on a campus that is now prominently flying an LGBTQ+ pride flag with leaders who boldly and clearly support our vibrant LGBTQ+ campus community, and with a strong group of pride student leaders who are here to tell you a little bit about who they are, what they do, and to read a recently updated pride proclamation. So I'd like to ask Eliza, one of our pride student leaders, to come on up, and happy Pride Month.
Hello, I am Eliza Gomez, and I am a Health Science Pre-Nursing major, and as pride student leaders, we carry responsibilities that help the college and our students. So the first thing that we do is we go to local community events to inform the community that COD is a welcoming and safe space for them because we know that COD stands for the people, and this not only helps with enrollment, but it does help with awareness because not many people know about the resources that, and programs that this wonderful college provides. The next thing that we do is we put on events to bring our community together, such as our Rainbow Youth Summit, which brings middle and high school GSAs here to the college where they can interact and have activities with younger LGBTQ students. That is a community that is often underserved. We also, sorry, that's all, that's all the little lists that I have, but I'd like to also introduce our other pride student leaders. Laisha, that is, who is a CIS and mortuary science major, Jay Bell, who is a sociology major, Jingo, who recently graduated and has returned to study business and accounting, and Opal, who is a recently graduated studio arts major transferring to Cal State Fullerton.
Whereas the Desert Community College District recognizes our community's diversity as one of our greatest strengths and promotes inclusion as a key priority by celebrating diversity in people, philosophies, cultures, beliefs, and backgrounds. And whereas the Desert Community College District recognizes the gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, and queer plus people from all walks of life, including race, ethnicity, religion, ancestry, national origin, economic status, physical or mental ability, medical condition, sex or gender identity or expressions. And
Whereas a growing body of research indicates LGBTQ+ people of color are adversely affected by cumulative discrimination and social exclusion, including racism from the LGBTQ+ community, homophobia, and heterosexism within their racial and ethnic community. And whereas recent survey data indicate that nearly 20% of college and university students identify as LGBTQ+. Tragically, 86.3% of LGBTQ+ students have reported experiencing harassment or assault based on their identity or sexual orientation, including 58.3% reporting sexual harassment. And
Whereas LGBTQ+ Americans, including those who live in our local community, continue to face marginalization, discrimination, and hatred simply for being who they are and for whom they love. And whereas the landmark Supreme Court decision of 2015 guaranteeing marriage equality in all 50 states was a historic victory for LGBTQ+ Americans, yet the American Civil Liberties Union is currently tracking over 500 anti-LGBTQ+ bills. And
Whereas, whereas the rainbow flag, also known as the LGBTQ+ pride flag, serves as a symbol of hope and inclusion to the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender people and LGBT, sorry, social movement, reflecting the belief that we are all freer when we are treated as equals. And whereas, flying the rainbow flag throughout the month of June for their symbolizes the celebration, support, and affirmation of diversity, equity, inclusion, and access. And whereas, June is a time to celebrate and affirm our LGBTQ+ community, raise awareness, and, I'm so sorry, and of quality services, and foster dialogue to promote a healthy, safe, and prosperous college community for all.
Now, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the College Desert Community College District declared June 2025 as Pride Month and encourage students, faculty, and staff to eliminate prejudice wherever it exists to celebrate the LGBTQ+ members of our community. Thank you and happy Pride Month.
Thank you, Cody, and to our student readers. We'll move on to item number six, our minutes. Items 6.01, approval of May 14, 2025, special meeting minutes. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions to the special meeting minutes on May 14? Seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Get an amendment on that. Excuse me. We were in the middle of a second. I just, I was looking at the minutes for a second. So I'd like to make an amendment before we, I'll do a second and then do discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, no discussion.
Thank you. I noticed that in the roll call vote, your call to meeting, the May 14 meeting, okay, great. I'm just concerned that in, during our roll call vote, I see that the other meeting, we have the actual times, and then this one, we don't for each of the trustees. I'm just concerned that we keep all our roll call, just our names, maybe because I saw in the previous minutes that there were times, and in this roll call, there were no times. So just would like to know if we could have everything in unison, just members present. I noticed that there were different timeframes in the previous, and this one, in the roll call, there were all, we were all here, but in the other one, I was present during roll call at the time at 9:30. So I just want to make sure that when we do the times, that we're good, because I wanted to amend. I got, I saw the wrong one. The other one, you put me down for 9:30, I was here at 9:30, and for this one, I was here at present, so.
Okay. Not sure you'd like to amend them, or what?
Well, no, in this one, we're good because members present, we didn't write down the
That's an observation.
It was an observation and then a comment that in the previous minutes, you put down my time, which I was present in here at the college, and then here, we were present, but then you didn't put down the times. So I just want to make sure, maybe in the future roll call, that we just put the names. I mean, you put the time, 9:36, and I just want us to be, are we gonna be doing actual times? Are we gonna be doing, I just have to make a statement, maybe no amendments at this time for this particular one.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Believe the way it works is if we're all present at the time roll call is called, time is necessary, but we're not all here, and someone shows up later, that time has to be recorded. Am I right, Carlos? That if they arrive later. Now, if the time in the next meeting is wrong, we have the opportunity to change that and modify that.
Okay, maybe because I missed when we had to amend the other one, because I was here present, and I want to be on record. So maybe I miss that time to amend the previous one, trustee Meyer. And there, it gives me at 9:35, and I was here
Okay.
at College of the Desert, so I just, for the record, want to put that out there. I missed my time to amend it, so excuse me. I saw that this one, we were good, and I missed my opportunity to amend the previous. So, Carlos, how could I bring that back after we make a call for this one? I'd like to amend the other one.
Would you like me to answer, sir?
Yes.
Okay. So the amendments can be brought back two minutes at any, at any time? So at a future meeting, you would just request that those minutes be amended and that you issue exactly the amendment that you would like issued?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Then, roll call.
Student trustee James. Epstein. Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Yes.
Trustee Meyer?
Yes.
Trustee Oden?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, 6.02, approval of May 2025 regular meeting minutes. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the regular meetings of May 16, 2025? Seeing none, then we'll hear one, entertain a motion.
Moved.
And our second, roll call.
Student trustee James. Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Yes.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Oden?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And 6.03, approval of May 22 special meeting minutes. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the special minutes of May 22, 2025? And do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, roll call.
Student trustee James?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Oden?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Reports. At this time, we will go on into our board reports per Board Policy 2311. All reports shall be All reports shall be limited to five minutes each, associated students of College of the Desert.
Good morning, Board trustees. ASCOD is currently undergoing a leadership transition for the upcoming academic year. I am pleased to report that all positions for the next term have been filled, and I am confident the college will have proper student representation over the next year. I would like to thank the faculty and the board for their support of ASCOD over the last year. Your assistance has been essential in assembling, in enabling our student senate to operate effectively. I believe ensuring strong student representation is extremely important, and I thank you all for the support. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. College of the Desert Foundation, Catherine Abbott, College of the Desert Executive Director of the Foundation. Welcome.
I just realized that I copy and pasted from last year, so I still have Val as Acting Interim Superintendent President, so forgive the error on my board report, but good morning, trustees. Student trustee James, welcome, Vice Presidents, as well as the Superintendent President, Val Martinez Garcia. I would like to take this opportunity to extend our sincere gratitude to student trustee Robles. You were an exemplary role model as a student trustee. You demonstrated professionalism and a committed, and a commitment to the position. Those who follow in your footsteps, so Ms. James, that is you, have big shoes to fill, but we know that you can do it. On behalf of the Foundation, we want to thank you for your service and your dedication to the mission of College of the Desert, and we have a small gift that we would like to give to you to wish you all the success you deserve once you leave COD. We are happy to report that we just worked with the Architecture Program to send students on an experiential trip up the coast to Hearst Castle. One of our very generous donors serves on the State Park Board and was able to offer complimentary entrance for 11 students and two faculty. Bert Batanga's email, I mean Bert Batanga emailed these heartfelt words to the Executive Director of the State Parks Foundation. On behalf of the students that experienced the Hearst Castle today, I want to extend our gratitude for allowing us access to such an iconic architectural masterpiece. They were in awe and inspired with everything they gazed upon today, many of which only have been images in books. Please know that you changed the lives of these students today since many of the students were reassured of their choice to pursue architecture as their major in college. For the third consecutive year, the College of the Desert Foundation is also proud to support the International Student Program and the Hospitality Business Management Program in providing COD students with a transformative experiential learning trip to Japan. This year, nine students will embark on the journey, each one participating not only as a traveler, but as a student enrolled in the college's work experience program, earning course credit while abroad and contributing to increase FTEs for COD. What sets this year's program apart is the integration of academic rigor with the work experience component. Cody McCabe shared that adding the work experience piece is enhancing their time abroad by giving them greater responsibilities along with defined goals and objectives that they must meet to successfully complete the course. The structured academic layer deepens the students' engagement and prepares them for success in an increasingly globalized professional world. In addition to the COD students traveling to Japan, an equal number of students from Japan participate in the program as well. So that they are connecting virtually in advance and then joining in person once COD, the COD cohort arrives in Japan. This reciprocal exchange fosters authentic cultural dialogue and collaboration. Programs like this elevate the college's global reputation and play a critical role in strengthening university partnerships, an asset that will become increasingly valuable with the upcoming opening of the Palm Springs campus, as well as the anticipated expansion of the international programming at Palm Springs. Also, according to Cody, current and potential Japanese partner universities, as well as government organizations serving the tourism industry in Japan, also recognize the level of sustained, sustained donor and foundation support for these programs as a clear sign that our district is reliable and a long-term partner for academic and industry collaborations. Inspired by the success of this model, the Foundation is thrilled to replicate this experiential learning opportunity for five students in the culinary program who will travel to San Miguel de Alende, Mexico this summer. And this will also be an, an educational exchange experience, which will give them real-world, hands-on kitchen experience, the opportunity to learn regional techniques from top Mexican chefs, and also build cross-cultural communication and leadership skills. Like their peers going to Japan, these students are also earning course credit through the work experience program and receiving upfront scholarships to, to help offset the cost of travel, once again reinforcing student access and increasing FTEs. We extend our heartfelt gratitude to the city of Palm Springs and Visit Greater Palm Springs for their generous contributions in supporting the Japan program. In addition, we are grateful to a newer organization, the Palm Springs Sister Cities, for their role in traveling to Mexico in advance of this trip to scout accommodations, transportation, and program coordination. This brings the total to 30 students over the past three years who have traveled or are currently traveling abroad to apply what they've learned in the classroom in meaningful applied contexts abroad. What may be even more surprising is that many of these students have never had a passport, they've never been on an airplane, and some have never even traveled outside the Coachella Valley. Finally, the Foundation is preparing for the state of the college on October 30th, so we want to make sure to give you all an opportunity to put the date on your calendar. There is going to be a lot of planning over the summer, however, we are excited to bring the community another opportunity to witness all of the exciting things happening at College of the Desert. And that concludes my report.
And thank you. This time we'll take a brief recess. With our agenda with the California School Employees Association, CSEA, Omar. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning, President Superintendent Martinez Garcia, Board of Trustees, and Vice Presidents. We are near the end of the academic school year and want to recognize and thank those who attended our CSEA Week events last month. On Monday, May 19, Jessica Enders and Scott Atkins welcomed us to their campuses in Indio and Palm Springs. We shared donuts and coffee with our members and listened to their concerns and ideas. President Val, Vice Presidents Chip, Amanda, Terry, and Neil, Trustee Meyer, and Sanchez joined us on Tuesday, May 20, for the night shift dinner with our MNO crew. It was great to see our members enjoying a delicious meal and getting to know you better. On Wednesday, May 21, Trustee Meyer joined us at our Brown Bag Beach Lunch. Stories were shared, and we helped us draw, and he helped us draw the winner of two passes to the Palm Springs Air Museum. Thank you again for recognizing our members and letting them know that you appreciate all they do. Thank you to the countless volunteers that assisted with graduation this year. We are grateful for their dedication, commitment, and willingness to volunteer the hours that were required to put on an unforgettable event for our students and their families. A special shout out to the MNO team and Enrollment Services staff for their efforts. Today, our members come to join, come to you with grateful hearts. As you know, we were in contract negotiations for a year and have finally reached a deal with the district. The good news is overshadowed by the worry and stress this long, arduous process took on our members. Throughout the many months of negotiations, they held their heads high and gave their all every day while concealing their concerns about retrocollo and possible layoffs. Thank you to our new leadership team for closing out negotiations. As we enter into the new round of negotiations for this academic year, we ask the district to make sure that negotiations, negotiations are started soon and that scheduled meeting dates are not canceled without extenuating circumstances. Our members deserve better than what happened last time. Before we head off into summer with lazy mornings, lazy evenings, lazy weekends. Wait, that doesn't happen here. Our members will be here, providing services to our students and keeping our campuses looking great. CSEA will be providing safety tips for working on hot days and reminders that our outdoor staff are entitled to extra breaks in shaded area and water provided by the district. Please say an extra thank you to them when you walk by. This concludes my report.
Thank you. College of the Desert Adjunct Association, Coda, Mike Gladett.
Hello, can you hear me? Am I here? Am I on?
IT, can we move over to, yeah, thank you.
Hello, thank you. Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent
Mike, good morning. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can, we can see you, but we can't hear you. Can we, can we have him viewed, Steve, please? Thank you. We can see Mike.
Okay, testing, one, two, three, four.
Give us a moment, Mike. We are trying to adjust our audio issues to see if that'll work.
Okay. Testing, one, two, three, four.
Mike, could you try one more time, please?
Okay, I'm testing. I just checked my microphone.
Not picking up audio.
Are you, you don't have audio?
Apologies, we are having audio issues. It seems like it's on our end. Mike says that he's tested his audio on his end and that everything's working fine. However, we are not able to hear him. He did include his report and it is attached to the agenda, but I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, hopefully next time we'll be able to hear from him, but thank you anyway.
Sorry, Mike. Thank you.
Okay. College of the Desert Faculty Association, COFA, Adam Gill.
Vice Chair Odin, Adam Gill was intending to be here, but however, he is not present today. And however, he did provide his written report, and so that's been included in, as part of the agenda today.
Okay, thank you. Academic Senate, Corbin Wild.
We did not receive a report from Dr. Wild for this month.
Okay, so then we move on to our governing board, student trustee James.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nusa James. I have no report. I just wanted to take this time to introduce myself. I am a health science student, a pre-nursing major. I'm a parent, a first-generation college student, and I am part of the neurodivergent community. I'm so excited to learn and work alongside all of you to uplift student voices. That's all.
And we are glad to have you aboard. Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
So right now, I want to personally congratulate you for your win and being part of the Student Board of Trustees. It's, we're just so honored. Why? Because that's why we get elected. It's for the students. So your voice is going to be so integral to telling us what's going on, what are the students wanting. Please get involved with going to the conferences. There's a great training for the CC. So we have her Val on getting the orientation, knowing you're, it's right now really big, it's your first day, but CCLC has one of the best orientations for student trustees. I want to thank you for taking on this role, because we could be, you know, you have your family, and so for you to be involved, this shows the tenacity, how we could get involved. And being a woman of color that is here and seeing that representation, this is what it's about. This is why I ran. So please, please, reach out to us, let us know how we could help you. Please tell us the truth on what the students want. I want to hear that, and I'm sure my other trustees want to hear that. Listen to Carlos. He's, he's been with us. He is, loves the students, cares about this, so he could guide you. So I just want to thank you for taking this opportunity to do this. Congratulations. I want to see your leadership. I want to hear, wait for this here, so. On that, I just also want to, in the same vein, I just want to welcome all the students for the summer session. I think it's a big part when you take summer school. So please, I just got some students that came to me and said, we don't have the $5 textbook. No, 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 no worries, students. Go to the li- No, 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 no worries, students. Go to the library. We have the book for you at the library. Also, reach out to all the tutoring that we have. Reach out to all the services that is available for the summertime. I just want to thank you. Summer's going to be hot. Keep dehydrated. We have water stations throughout the campus, so please reach out to us if you need anything because I know the summer's going to be a little hot. So thank you for coming to the college during summertime. And also just want to thank, my God, the commencement was without a hilt. I want to thank the team, especially Carlos Maldonado, because he made sure and the MNO team and the classified team without a hitch. The families, when you see the faces of the students and the families, it's, this is their time. It's an unforgettable. And you all, the volunteers, made it possible. So their special moment is a milestone in their lives. Many of our students are first gen, never been on a campus. This is a big deal, so I just want to thank our volunteers for going beyond their service. I want to also thank Val Martinez for putting on afterwards an event for all the staff and I got to see all the faculty. It was wonderful to connect with you all. In an informal, I thought it was great that we all could, after the commencement, bring on the tradition of having an event for the faculty and for the staff. I want to see more for the faculty and staff, hint, and just want to thank that. Also, CSEA, it was very special for me in particular, the Tuesday night dinner for the shifts. Chip, you're an amazing, thank you for coming to the COD. The people, the night shift, I just want to let our faculty, our staff, and our community, these are men and women that their shifts start at 6:00 PM. And at what time do they end? 2:00 AM? 2:30 AM. These are essential for the College of the Desert. My father was a classified employee, an educational, he worked the night shifts to put us through college. So for me, the classified staff to keep our college is very, very special. And I just want to give thanks to the classified, the people who mow our lawns as well, keep our grass green. I have some pictures. I want to share them with everyone. I mean, it takes work to get the college looking the way it is. We see it like this, the faculty, you come and teach, but it's, it's work to keep it looking shiny. So I just want to thank, from the bottom of my heart, all the classified. And what a privilege to have met you that evening. It was very nice. Your dedication to the college is wonderful. And Chip, keeping us, we're just, I'm so glad you're here. Something that was really interesting was, that I attended with the executive team, was the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce, which happened, I believe, yesterday. Is that correct? It was incredible. I want to give a shout out to Eddie to be on a brand ambassador for the greater. I have been saying, get involved with the chambers of commerce. I'm seeing this for the college as a business owner myself. I think it's great that the college is partnering with people who are giving jobs to our students, the small business owners. They're the ones giving jobs. We go to school to get a job. So I think it's important that we have better relationships and more, I mean, it was incredible to see that. I want us to get more involved with all the different chambers of commerce. And speaking of that, I attended the Thousand Palms Chamber of Commerce last night. And it was great because I talked about our hall pass. When I go to those events, people still don't know in the community and I just want to let the community right now know because a lot of you are watching, we have a program that I started. The dream with Sunline when we worked on it was to have free transportation for the students. The students of Desert Hot Springs took about four hours to get. The people from Coachella took a long time. You had to transfer that bus in the middle of the heat to get to school. So the hall pass is there for the students. Please go to the hall pass. When you go to the College of the Desert, there's a button that you can press and it's now seamlessly. Before, you had to go to campus, pick up, that's old school. Now you could just download it and we could take you. So there exists a free, I want to repeat because we have to give the word out, a hall pass. This is something, free transportation, that is so critical. And I started it because I had to catch public transportation to go to college. So from my experience, it took me so long. I had to catch something called BART, for those from the Bay Area. The bus to the BART, another bus to get to UC Berkeley. So transportation when you're at college is essential to get to work, you know. So also on that vein, I want to talk about the incredible work of work experience and give a shout out and tell the students, yes, there's opportunities to work on campus. I remember when I was at Berkeley, I was part of the work experience. So check on your financial aid for those students that are watching because this is what it's about. We're here, all of us here are here for the students. So please, it's called work experience. You look at your financial aid and you look about where you could work. I would love to see in a future study session about our student work experience. I think it would be wonderful that we do have a study session and see what's going on with our work experience and our purple, I'm sorry, is it called the purple suitcase or did it change? Something about the jobs. Anyway, I want to tell all employers, please hire our students. Welcome to the new students for summer session. Thank you, and this ends my report. Thank you.
Trustee Mayor.
First off, I would like to congratulate all the College of the Desert 2025 graduates. You worked hard for your achievements and it's well-earned. Your current students, this is a goal for you to look forward to, the commencement ceremony, your degree, your certificate. Keep working hard. When I was sworn in as a trustee in December, I was told that May would be a busy month. But little did I know just how rewarding and eventful it would be. This past month has been an incredible journey, filled with opportunities to engage with faculty, staff, and most importantly, the students. After all, each of us plays a supporting role in helping the students achieve their goals. And I was privileged to witness many of them reach significant milestones. With over 1,900 students earning degrees and certificates this month, the campus was alive with celebrations regarding their hard work and achievements. Nearly every day brought a new event, sometimes two, highlighting the end of another successful academic year. It was inspiring to see the college honor the faculty, the classified staff, and students who are either graduating or continuing their educational pursuits. I want to spend a special thank you to the theater group, whose 30 talented students delivered a remarkable performance of Jesus Christ Superstar. The transfer students who worked diligently in reaching their goal of moving on to other colleges and universities. The veterans and trio members who persevered in achieving their aspirations. The nursing program, which pinned more than 70 registered nurses. I'm looking forward to seeing them in action throughout the valley, as I do visit them from time to time. The dedicated staff who organized various lunches and dinners to recognize their invaluable contributions. These are the invisible people that hold the college together. Remember, we're the only community college that ranked in the top 100 beautiful campuses. There's a reason for that. Thank you, Chip, and your teams. Our Public Safety Academy, which continues to provide outstanding training for peace officers, firefighters, corrections officers, EMTs, and more. One of the most meaningful moments for me this month was standing on stage at the commencement. The volunteers did an outstanding job coordinating every detailed event, ensuring a memorable day for students and their families. Walking in the procession line behind the Faculty of the Year, Dr. Vazoli, was an excellent start to a wonderful commencement ceremony. Seeing the graduates, young and old, proudly don their regalia, walk across the stage was truly inspiring. This is what College of the Desert is all about, celebrating achievements and paving the way for future success. Beyond commencement, several important gatherings took place in May. Our board retreat provided valuable insights reinforcing key concepts and expanding our understanding of board responsibilities and our role in supporting the college. Two-by-two meetings, the one I attended with City of Indio facilitated discussions and collaborative efforts between the college and the city. Topics included childcare services for the city employees, security enhancements for students and faculty, and joint initiatives even involving the police department. President Martinez Garcia left the meeting with an extensive list of follow-ups to advance these initiatives. Attending the CVUSD State of the District was a privilege as high school students from across that district showcased their talents, many of whom will be future COD students. A group of us participated in a Hispanic American Chamber of Commerce event where Assemblyman Gonzalez shared his strong support for education and notably for the College of the Desert. Most recently, eight of us from COD attended the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce Annual Installation and Business Awards Dinner. Our own Eddie Hernandez was honored as a GBCC ambassador. News to me, but he is. May has been a month filled with meaningful connections, inspiring achievements, and exciting opportunities for collaboration. I look forward to continuing this journey and supporting the students, faculty, and staff who make College of the Desert such an exceptional institution. And welcome to our student trustee, James. We will support you. If anything is mysterious or you need questions, you have this whole board to ask with varying different backgrounds and experiences. Just no question is silly enough to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Meyer. We had the board retreat, also attended several webinars with updates on financial aid and the Pell Grant and some of the proposed changes that they were going to make, but it appears that in their summation yesterday that some of the worst case scenarios did not happen. So that's a very good thing for our students. Attended two, two-by-twos, one for Palm Springs and one with Desert Hot Springs, and they were outstanding. So inspirational, the cooperation of the leadership, I think is really essential. And the more of those connections that we can continue to establish and cement, the better off we are. So thank you. That concludes my report.
Sure my mic is on. Student trustee James, welcome to the DIAS. We're excited to have you again. Kind of reiterating what the trustees already have commented on, commencement was a wonderful time. I really appreciate the commencement committee. Just so everyone knows, there were 837 students that walked across the stage. That is 837 students that have in some way or shape or form transformed their lives. Congratulations to all of you who assisted in that event and all the events that preceded it. It's an amazing time, the month of May. Dean Maldonado, Dean Ayon, thank you for your leadership and all that you do every day to help us advance these events and specifically the commencement. As trustee Meyer had mentioned, and Oden, and trustee Sanchez Fulton, we have begun our two-by-twos. Thank you to the trustees for their participation and leadership, working with the cities so that we can better communicate and coordinate our strategic planning efforts. We are one Coachella Valley and we want to make sure that we are in constant communication with each of the cities to make sure that they understand that we have a lot of investments as far as our desire to work with them at the local level, but as well as any other level possible. We're really excited to have those two-by-twos on the schedule. At College of the Desert, our mission centers on student success, equity, and opportunity. We celebrate Pride Month and reaffirm our support for undocumented students. We are reminded that every student who walks through our doors deserves to be seen, heard, and valued. This month is a month to uplift the dignity that is inherent in every member of our community. Pride Month is the celebration of identity, resilience, and the ongoing fight for equity in the LGBTQ+ community. At College of the Desert, we take pride in fostering an inclusive environment where students of all sexual orientations and gender identities feel safe, respected, and supported. Through our LGBTQ+ students' programming, cultural competency training, and student services, we continue to affirm that belonging is essential to student success. College of the Desert is also proud to champion the undocumented students that reside in our communities or attend our college. We remain committed to providing resources, advocacy, and a pathway to achievement for our Dreamers and our undocumented students abroad. Our support includes access to the Dream Center, AB 540, DACA guidance, mental health services, financial aid navigation, campus-wide education on immigration issues. Undocumented students and students of mixed status are an integral part of our roadrunner family. They are very important to who we are and who we continue to try to aspire to be. We honor their courage, contributions, and aspirations. Dignity is not a privilege. It is a right. Our commitment to human dignity compels us to protect that right for every student. We recognize that the pursuit of education is not just about academic achievement, but it is about affirming the worth of every student's journey, their story, their identity. Whether a student is LGBTQ+, undocumented, first generation, or system-impacted, they belong here. This month and every month, we stand firm in our belief that education must be a place of liberation. At College of the Desert, we are not simply preparing students for degrees. We are building a culture rooted in equity, human dignity, and justice. I want to thank our faculty, staff, and student leaders for creating this environment of care and for advancing the values that make our institution a beacon of hope and opportunity across the Coachella Valley. We are COD. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Superintendent President Val Martinez, ladies and gentlemen. We move on to our consent agenda. Item 8.01, blanket motion, all consent items will be voted on. One motion, any board member may request that any of the items may be moved to action agenda. Are there any requests to separately consider any of the consent agenda items?
Vice Chair, I would like to remove 9.01 out for conversation and discussion.
9.01? Are there any others? Then we'll chair one chain of motion. Remove 9.01 to the action item, 1301.
I made the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, so it's not necessary to make a motion to move an item from consent? It's just necessary to accept a motion to approve the consent agenda without the items removed?
Okay, so we're just accepting, all right?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Thank you. I need a second.
Okay.
Now you direct the president to do roll call.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton, student trustee James, trustee Meyer.
Hi.
Trustee Oden.
Hi.
Motion, Chair.
Okay. So we have the new action item, 13.01, or which is 9.01, was pulled from the consent agenda as separate discussion and consideration. agenda as separate discussion and consideration. Do I have a motion to approve 1301?
I'll move.
I'll second. Discussion.
I think we need further review of the wording of this, as was suggested earlier. I would like to hear what the original was and why, and what the new one is with that word that was inserted, and what the purpose of this board policy truly is before I would move forward on this.
This is a first reading, right Carlos?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I think on a first reading, it's appropriate for us to question this and get clarity, and to me, I'm kind of foggy on it right now.
Okay. Eileen, is Eileen on? Eileen, can you give us some background?
Certainly. I have reviewed this and provided legal advice to... I'm certain it went to trustee Kinnaman.
We're having issues on our end hearing you.
Let me try another microphone.
Is that any better?
Is that any better?
Are we able to reach her?
They're working on it.
Eileen, could you try speaking into your mic?
Yes, is that working?
Yes, we can hear you now, thank you.
Yay. Thank you. So regarding this board policy, I have been previously asked to review it, and I did so. I provided a memo to trustee Kinnaman and I believe President Martinez Garcia. I am happy to look at it again and provide a memo to the full board if that would be helpful.
Yes, that would be very helpful.
All right. Happy to do that.
Thank you. Do we need any further action on 13? This is first reading.
Yeah, the action on the table is to approve a first reading.
Okay.
So you would go forward with that. You have a motion and a second to do that.
No.
Take a vote.
Are you ready for the president to take role on that vote?
Yes.
Student trustee James?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
No.
Trustee Meyer?
No.
Trustee Odin?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, so we're moving on in our agenda to action item 14, board of trustees, 1401, board policy 2210, officers, this is our second reading.
You're correct at 14.01.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Student trustee James? Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
I'm going to say the right correct vote.
This is our second reading for board policy 2210.
Trustee Meyer?
Yes.
Trustee Odin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Action, Human Resources. 1501, Public Employees Appointment Interim Vice President of Student Services is recommended that the board approve the employment agreement for the interim vice president of student services. The recommended action is to approve the employment agreement for the interim vice president of instruction commencing July 1st, 2025 through October 31st, 2025, with a salary placement at range 15, column 4, for an annual salary of $249,014.22, as well as provisions for evaluation and fringe benefits comparable to other similar leadership positions. Do I have a motion to approve the employment agreement as presented?
So moved.
Second.
And I have a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Student trustee James?
Yes.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Motion carries.
15.02, Public Employee Appointment, Acting Vice President of Human Resources and Human Relations and Employee Relations is recommended that the board approve the employment agreement for the acting vice president of Human Resources and Employee Relations. This recommended action will approve the employment agreement for the acting vice president of Human Resources and Employee Relations commencing from July 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025, with a salary range of 15, column 4, for an annual salary of $249,014.28, as well as provisions for evaluation and fringe benefits comparable to other similar leadership employees. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second roll call vote, please.
Student trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have 15.03, Public Employee Appointment, Interim Director, EOPS, Care, and Foster Youth Services. It's recommended that the board approve the employment agreement for the interim director of EOPS, Care, and Foster Youth Services. This recommended action will approve the employment agreement for the interim director of EOPS, Care, and Foster Youth Services commencing from July 1st, 2025 through November 5th, 2025, with a salary range at 9, column 8, for an annual salary of $155,683.83, I think that should be cents, as well as provisions for evaluation and fringe benefits comparable to other similar leadership employees. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second roll call vote, please.
Student trustee James? Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Chairman, Odin? Matt? Matt, okay, thank you. I just want to say, the position, like all the positions that we are saying I to, are very critical for the, especially this one. Why? It's our EOPS, Care, and our Foster Youth. These are the most vulnerable in our community, so I just want to welcome and taking care of the voiceless. These are a very critical part of the college, so just want to make a comment on that particular. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. 15.04, Presentation of the Initial Proposal from College of the Desert Adjunct Association to the Desert Community College District. Do I have a motion to agendize this public hearing for July 24th for the board of trustees
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Roll call vote, please.
Student trustee James? Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Moving on in our agenda to 15.05, Presentation of the Initial Reopener Proposals for the Desert Community College District to College of the Desert Adjunct Association. Do I have a motion to agendize for the public hearing for July 24th, board of trustees meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second roll call vote, please.
Student trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Motion carries.
16, Administrative Services, 1601 Budget Revisions. Do I have a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 budget revisions as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
So...
Roll call vote.
Student trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We move on in our agenda to 16.02, 2025 through 2026 Tentative Budget. Do I have a motion to adopt the 2025, 2026 Tentative Budget as presented? Thank you, Dr. West and Diana Gijaro. Are there any further questions to the board?
So can we have Diana come up, Gijaro, and please present us the tentative budget? Diana's Director of Fiscal Services with us.
Do we have the presence?
And Dr. West?
Is the mic on? Good morning, can you hear me? Good morning, Board of Trustees.
Morning.
Vice Presidents, President Val Martinez Garcia. Welcome, new student trustee James, and good morning, everybody, thank you. My name's Diana Gijaro, I am the Director of Fiscal Services. And I'm back. I am here to present to you the tentative budget. There we are, okay. Me and signallagers don't mix, so just FYI. So we begin with our economic backdrop. Although the governor's budget in January reflected a stronger fiscal position than in previous years, the California, the state of California unfortunately continues to mitigate deficits. The governor's May revision projected a $12 billion deficit while the Legislative Analyst Office's assessment is similar in the form of $14 billion. There are many factors that contribute to California's economy, but the main two that are affecting these deficits are higher baseline spending as well as lower revenues. Medical is projected to cost California $76.8 billion in '24-'25, which has increased throughout the years and has doubled since 2017. As I mentioned, lower revenues continue to be an issue. This year, about $5 million less in revenue from personal income taxes, corporate taxes, as well as losses in property taxes due to the LA fires. It's important to note that tax revenue funds are educational protection funds, which College of the Desert receives a good amount through our apportionment every year. There's also other factors considering our economy for California. There's the 2025 tax deadline that was extended from April to October to those affected by the LA fires. This doesn't necessarily create deficits, but it may create deferrals in the future years. If you all may remember, those affected by Hurricane Hillary were granted that extension as well, which created deferrals, as it creates more of a problem for California to project their revenue projections. And finally, as we all know in the news, there's tariffs, there's uncertainty with tariffs that will create uncertainty as it creates more issues when it comes to revenue projections. Here we have a depiction of how the state is addressing the $14 billion deficit and its mitigating strategies to try to remedy the problem. We began here with reduction in multi-year spending by $4.9 million. This is primarily in healthcare programs. We move on to funding shifts of $3.2 billion. This is shifting of the general funds to Proposition 4 and other climate bonds. There's also delays or deferrals of $1.3 billion. Delays, like I mentioned, is, or deferrals I should say, rather, are essentially $1.3 billion less in our next fiscal year than compared to the funds received in '24-'25. These funds would later be provided to California community colleges once the funds are available to, from the state. We move on here to revenue-related solutions such as changing rules that define how taxable profits are determined for financial institutions, in hopes that this generates more revenue in future years. And finally, cost shifts such as special funding loans. The budget for California community colleges in the May revision includes Proposition 98 funding. This was $4.6 billion below than compared to the January's budget. This includes $3.9 billion in reduction in general funds and a reduction of $753 million in local property tax revenue. To mitigate this issue, the May revision proposes $531.6 million in deferrals from '25-'26 to '26-'27. This translates roughly to $47.8 million in referrals to College of the Desert over the two years. I just want to reiterate that deferrals means it's just an IOU from the state and the funds will be available once the state has them to disperse. Also, the May revision reduced the COLA, the Cost of Living Adjustment, was reduced from 2.43% in January and it was reduced to 2.3% this past May. There was a significant enrollment growth funding that has substantially increased from previous years. It has been half a percent for quite some time. They proposed a funded growth of 2.35%. The May revision also eliminated one-time funding for several programs, which you see here, statewide technology transformation, common cloud data platform, career passport, and credit for prior learning, as well as rising scholars. There are shifts in Proposition 98 funds to TK expansion in TK through 12 education. Unfortunately for community colleges, this reduces our funding by $292.4 million. This roughly translates to College of the Desert $26.3 million. This would be over three years. Here we have the assumptions that we applied into our '25-'26 budget. As I mentioned, the 2.3 Cost of Living Adjustment. We applied a 3% growth from our 320P2FTEs, which was $10,200. So we applied a 3% growth on that in this budget. We included 0.1% increases in PERS. We have no contribution to our other post-employment benefits and zero contributions to our capital outlay funds. We move on to... We move on to our assumptions for the multi-year projections. Cost of Living Adjustment for twenty six, twenty seven is two point seven percent. Cost of Living for twenty seven, twenty eight, two point seven six percent. And for growth, we decided to be a little bit conservative. We started developing our budget back in March. We hadn't seen the three twenty report at the time, so we decided to be a little bit conservative, so we applied zero percent growth for twenty six, twenty seven, and twenty seven, twenty eight. We also considered our increases in PERS. PERS have increased half a percent to one percent constantly every year. STIRS continue to maintain at nineteen point one percent. It's been the same for quite some time, for several years. We included our middle college status and our center status, which generates over ten million dollars for College of the Desert. Here we have a very high-level view of our unrestricted, restricted, and combined general funds. We projected with our three percent growth in twenty five, twenty six, revenues of one hundred and six point five million dollars, expenditures of one hundred and seven point six, leaving us with a planned deficit spending of one point one million dollars. This includes prioritization and prior-year purchase orders. So this is a planned deficit spending, the one point one. Restricted funds, we project fifty point four in revenue, expenditures of fifty one point six million dollars, leaving us with deficit spending of one point two. Essentially, restricted funding should net every year, so therefore, we're planning on spending prior-year allocations. And the final column is the combination of the two. Here we have our unrestricted general fund and our multi-year projections. As I mentioned, the twenty five, twenty six, we have a planned deficit of, planning on spending one point one on prioritization and prior-year POs. For twenty six, twenty seven, as I mentioned, we decided to be conservative, applying zero percent growth, leaving us with one hundred and one million dollars in revenue and one hundred and thirteen point two in expenses, leaving us with a two point two deficit spending. This also includes prioritization, prior-year POs, Cost of Living Adjustments, and step increases, salary increases. Twenty seven, twenty eight leave us with one hundred and fifteen point three in revenues, expenditures one hundred and eighteen point three, leaving us with the two point nine deficit spending. This, like I mentioned, this also includes prioritization, prior-year POs, salary increases, and applicable COLA. It's very important to note that the expenditures include every single vacancy that College of the Desert has. Therefore, I'd rather project everything. We've never been fully staffed, no community college has ever been fully staffed. So College of the Desert has had salary savings throughout the years, about two to three million dollars every year consecutively for about five years. So this is, the budget, like I mentioned, includes every single vacancy in the expenditures. So for budget highlights and risks, as I mentioned, the state continues to mitigate budget deficits. The, there's also funding for K twelve of education and community colleges continues to remain stable. But unlike the state, the Legislative Analyst Office believes that this might be a mistake as if we, if the governor continues to not make any cuts within this particular item, they believe it'll create issues further down the line in future years. We have a continued increase in enrollment. Enrollment has been positively trending in College of the Desert since twenty twenty one, so we hope that we can get back to our pre-pandemic numbers. So risks to consider are the twenty five, twenty six, and twenty six, twenty seven deferrals. As I mentioned, it translates roughly to forty seven point eight million dollars for College of the Desert over two years. As I mentioned, essentially, it's an IOU to community colleges. Also, important to maintain our middle college status and center status. We must continue trending with over ten thousand FTS to maintain our middle college status and a thousand FTS for our middle college status, excuse me, for the Indio, for the Indio Center. And as I mentioned, College of the Desert receives over ten million dollars in funding in those two items alone. And when preparing the budget, it's very important that we must always consider the fifty percent law. We've been compliant for a few years and hope to continue with our compliance. We must spend at least fifty percent of our funding in education. Here we have our enrollment trends. This is the recalc FTS of our attendance reports, beginning from twenty fourteen, fifteen, all the way to our twenty four, twenty five enrollment report, but the twenty four, twenty five is the P two enrollment numbers. As I mentioned before, enrollment has been positively trending, and we're hoping that we can engage and have our pre-pandemic numbers in the very near future.
Yeah.
So first and foremost, you know, I'm an economist, and I look at graphs. This is my language. I love the trend as I'm seeing this. When I was here at the college, we were at ten thousand seven hundred thirty two. I see that we're trending that
In the right direction.
To that direction, pre-pandemic. So this is really good. Are we seeing this? Do you think we're going to hit that in twenty twenty, twenty six, twenty seven? Because I don't see that bar graph. I'm assuming when we would do graphs, you could kind of even give an outlay with a computer analysis on that. What are your thoughts?
I'm just giving you actual numbers for now. As I mentioned, we started our budget development in March, so we hadn't seen the ten two FTS that we have in the P two report. I mean, considering the trend, I would probably think, I wouldn't, you know, want to speculate, but I would think in the very near future, for sure. And if I want to mention also, I know in previous years, there was talks about the new funding floor. Based on our enrollment trends, we are seen to be moving out of it. The new funding floor was for us to, or for community colleges to be funded at our twenty four, twenty five allocation if we didn't grow in FTS. So right now, with our trends, it seems that we're out of, out of, out of the woods a little bit.
I will add, our deans, our Office of Instruction, Student Services, executive team, and everybody on board are working very, very hard to look at some growth away from that ten thousand two hundred and towards that ten thousand seven hundred through our dual enrollment, through our outreach efforts, just a lot of things that we're putting together to try to get us back to where we were, but not in the same way that we were there, maybe in a different mix. Again, heavily, leaning heavily on the dual enrollment side, but also looking at new programming, opening up some more classes, different partnerships. So we're excited about where we're going.
Yeah, I wanted to see that little nice graph because I believe based on our strategic master plan and what we've been doing with the whole new, the new era, I call it, the new of COD family, that I would have loved to have seen just a, these are projections. I would have loved to have seen because according to this, it looks like, you know, I think the community, a lot of the concern was, are we going to maintain our middle college status? Because that's an extra for the public to know. A lot of times, we, we use vernacular and language that most of the community don't understand. So could you please explain to the public also, what does that mean when it says middle college status? And in terms of enrollment? A lot of people don't understand that term.
So for middle college status, as I mentioned in the previous slide, we must have over ten thousand FTS. College of the Desert receives over eight million dollars just based on that status. So it's, like I mentioned, it's important to keep our middle college status, and it's important to keep our center status. We also receive about over two million dollars in our center status as well.
Question for the public and for everyone to use this language because people watch us. Let's, I'm not, I'm hoping that the Palm Springs campus, will that be considered a center? I mean, please let me know.
Yeah, we're hoping that's the plan in the future to make that a center as well. Yeah.
So that would be called a, hopefully, a, just to let the public know, a center status because of the level, because Indio is a
Yes, that is a center. They have a center status in Indio. I know there's accreditation, and there's also many parts to make it a center, so, but I know that's, that's the plan for the future. Yeah, for the, for the Palm Springs campus.
Thank you.
So my question is, your budget for next year, is it based on that ten thousand two hundred FTS, or is there other numbers you
We applied a three percent growth on the ten two. Yes.
Three percent growth. And if I can just mention
Thank you.
Just to highlight for this, two things, because I think it's confusing sometimes you look, these are actuals, so they're not projections, these are actuals that we're, that we're using on. That ten thousand two number is a real number that we got in P two. And to highlight even more the good work that we've done, if you look back in nineteen twenty, every community college in the state of California, at that time, it was prior to the new student-centered funding formula. So at that time, everyone was shifting, you could shift your summers. So that ten thousand seven thirty two really wasn't a real number back then. It was a number that we had a summer before and even the summer after that we shifted into one year to boost us. And that really benefited all California community colleges at the time because we then set that floor at that time, and you had a three-year that you, that you got funded at that level. And then at the end of that three years, we had a pandemic and emergency conditions came in for the states. Everyone got it for six years. They got that number. So we were funded at that high level, but it was an inflated, not real number. The ten two is a real number
Yes.
From our P two. So that's really kind of an important calculation, and our goal is, is to get back at the ten seven, ten eight, but have that be a real number without having to do any summer shifts. And then number two, just to highlight on the previous slides, you know, as Diana mentioned, we're deficit budgeting, which sometimes is a concern. People are like, why is this in the negative? As she mentioned, and I want to highlight, we do not believe that at the end of the year, we're going to be in a deficit. We believe we're going to be putting money back into reserves. But because we're fully outlining salaries that we know are already vacant, because we know every year we have purchase orders that do not get fully spent out, we know there's a swing of three or four million dollars that we have. What we've talked about is doing a better job along the way. What we've done in the past here at College of the Desert is we wait till May and June, and we're closing out, and then surprise, the number swings. What we want to start to do as we go forward is to look quarterly and track it as we go so that we can know, and there's not that big swing at the end, and there's a surprise for folks. So just wanted to highlight those two things.
And just to add to the board notes, Executive Council looks at these positions very carefully when we look to fill them, and we talk about how does it impact the fifty percent and how does it impact our budget numbers? And so we strategically have gone through our classified staff, our leadership, as well as our faculty, to be able to come to some numbers that don't disrupt the budget.
So even though a position is open, it goes through that process to make sure everything's in balance.
And Chip's really good at reminding us the whole time during the discussion that he says he's not Dr. No, but in those meetings, all right, Chip, I'm going to call you out, he's very, very conservative in that meeting with the, with the budget, so yes.
Dr. No, I have a question. P two, could you please tell the public and ourselves, what does that mean?
So it's the second quarter, so it's the end of the second quarter, so we get a, you know, P one and kind of look at our numbers. P two is kind of mid-year, P three, and then P four is at the end. So that's just the kind of the quarterly reports that sync up with the state with what we're projecting, and then what actually comes in and is recorded. And so that's, again, a way for us to sync up as we go along throughout the year. Good question. Thank you.
No correlation to the semesters?
No correlation to, well, partially, partially in December, P two.
All right, so we will move on to the, finally, the budget process. Just wanted to give you all a glimpse of the budget process for us begins in January when the governor releases their proposed budget. The May, in May, the governor releases its budgeted revisions, and a, this is a more concise budget that's released in May because the governor has a better understanding of the revenues and also the resources available for the following year. The, in the next few weeks, in May and June, there is legislative negotiations, and also College of the Desert is working very hard, very hard to include any adjustments for our budget that came from the May Revision. And so that today, June twelfth, we can have our tentative budget adopted. By June fifteen, legislation, all budget-related legislations such as trailer bills must be approved by both Houses of Legislature. And finally, by June thirtieth, the governor signs the budget legislation. July end on, there's trailer language for budget, and also COD continues to factor in any changes from the tentative budget so that we can incorporate them in the September nineteen final adopted budget. And with that, I just would like to thank my accounting staff because I wouldn't be able to produce all these beautiful charts without their help and their hard work. So any questions?
Foremost, I just want to thank you for a beautiful report. I think it's so imperative that we tell the public and our staff and our faculty that the budget affects us. What goes on in California affects our higher ed budget. Having gone to the CCLC, attended those online webinars with the other trustees, we've been, and like yourselves, the faculty that are aware that the budgets are coming from California, and then they get disseminated, and then the final budget, and then we actually know. I would like to see something, how the call to action, what could we do? We care about, we are COD, we care about our budget. We can't fund these projects without a budget. I would just love to see a tab in our website saying, very apparent to the public, what could we do to ask the governor or our legislature? Have a tab, most community college, something that I've learned because of the CCLC, most California community colleges have a tab on, it's called a legislative tab, and they tell you about what could we do to protect College of the Desert? Can you ask our legislators to please talk about our community, give us that budget so we could take care of COD? I just would love to see a tab, like other community colleges, we're all getting together and asking as a conglomerate, asking the budget, please save our community colleges. Thank you for your excellent report.
Thank you. Any other questions?
None, thank you. At this time. Roll call.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Yes.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Motion carried.
We move on to sixteen point oh three, resolution number zero six one two two five dash one, temporary loan. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution? Number zero six one two two five dash one as presented.
So moved.
A second.
Roll call.
Discussion.
Discussion?
Yes, I'd like, could someone, President Val, please explain this to the public, what this means, because it sounds, it doesn't sound right, but just explain the purpose of why we're doing this. Thank you.
Sure, excellent question. So this is a resolution that comes forward annually. It allows us with cash flow to kind of move things between funds and gives us authority to do that on behalf of the district. It's very common, and it's done at districts throughout the state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Student trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We move on to resolution number six one two two five dash three appropriations of wire payments. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, another, if you could explain why we do wire transfers, not like we're in debt, just for, just if you could explain that, thank you.
Yes, again, this is just a standard operating agreement that we have with Riverside County Office of Education in coordinating wire transfers on behalf of the district throughout the year. Again, common and something that all, all community colleges are doing within this, this area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Student trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Oden?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right. And we move on to Item Number 16.06 Resolution Number 061225-4 Adoption of Education Protection Accounting Funding and Expenditure. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Our second, a motion and a second as presented, any discussion?
So once again, so once again, because the responsibility of the Board of Trustees, if you did sharey and budgetary, if President Val Martinez, could we explain, if Chip could explain to the public and what this means for us?
Sure. The GAN limit in California is a constitutional spending cap that restricts how much tax money state and local governments, including districts, can spend. So again, this is an ongoing operation exercise that we do annually.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Student trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Oden?
Aye.
And we come to 16.07 Fiscal Year 2027 through 2031, a five-year capital outlay plan. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, so move. Your second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Janan, roll call vote.
Student trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Oden?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now we move on to information items with no action is required from the board. Information Board of Trustees, 1701 Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, CBOC 23, 2024 Annual Report. President Martinez Garcia, could you please help introduce this item?
Yeah, we'll ask interim Vice President West to go ahead and introduce our speaker.
Thank you, Superintendent President Martinez Garcia. I'm very excited today to have Rick Sealy, who's our Citizens Bond Oversight Chair here, to kind of share a little bit about our committee annual report and also do a brief presentation.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rick Sealy and I am the Chair of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. I've been in this, in the, on the committee for about three years now, as I recall. And I'm proud to present to you the committee's 20th annual report for the fiscal year ending in June of 2024. I believe you have a copy of the report in your package. Our committee meets quarterly to review and discuss project by project progress of the bond programs, the expenditures, including planning and financial assumptions. We review and monitor the bond programs to ensure transparency and accountability. This report documents the results of that oversight. The entire committee is very proud of this year's report. Staff did a wonderful job coordinating the production and we all commend them for a job very, very well done. As you're well aware, through Measure B from 2010, 2004, and Measure CC in 2016, voters approved a little over $924 million to be used in support of the college's 2024 to 29 Strategic Educational Master Plan and the 2019 Facilities Master Plan. It's the function of our committee to oversee the use of those bonds to ensure they are expended only on projects outlined in the bond measures. As you're also aware, the Board of Trustees engaged the audit firm of IBALEI to complete independent audits of the financial and construction records of the bond programs. I'm very pleased to report that the audit firm reported that the College of the Desert has properly accounted for the expenditures and they were made unauthorized projects. Tests of compliance reported zero instances of non-compliance and there were no, no other adverse findings. As Chair of the Committee, I can say to the best of my knowledge that the project review that we undertake quarterly and the audits performed are the, on the results leave me comfortable that the Desert Community College District is in full compliance. I'd like to express my appreciation for our, for our committee members. We represent a diverse group of citizens from all parts of the Coachella Valley. And this year, we even added my Vice Chair, David Reddy, a current Palm Springs City Councilperson and the former city manager of Palm Springs. Yes. To close, I'd like to make a presentation. As, as all of you are aware, I'm sure, our John White, the Executive Director of Bond Programs and Facility Planning, is retiring at the end of June. John provides the structure we need to, to perform efficiently and effectively in a very productive way. And as a personal note, when I joined three years ago, John personally helped me become acclimated to the committee. And I think he does that with every new member that comes in. And I really appreciate that it really helped me become quickly well acquainted with the tasks before me. And I really, and I really appreciate that help. So with that, I'd like to make this presentation of significant appreciation. John? For your perception of dedication and commitment to our community.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right there, I want to say something. I just want to thank.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you and all the people that serve on the bond committee. Just for the public to know, the bond committee is made up of citizens throughout the Coachella Valley, which oversee our bond measures of CC, I'm sorry, President Val, project, how much, how many millions of dollars and, and for our bond?
$924.
Yeah. So I just want to thank, and being the board liaison, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, it's a pleasure. And I also want to concur a big thank you to John and congratulations on a job well done. We hate to see you go. So thank you so much for your volunteerism and serving this as well.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, we are going to return to Item 1606.
Actually, do you mind if you take a short recess and we can walk through this?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Okay. We'll call this meeting back to order. We have a correction on a num, on the numbering. So we are going to review 16.06 Resolution Number 061225-2 Adoption of the Wire Transfer Payments. Chair, will entertain a motion?
I thought we had gone through this one already.
I'm gonna.
So moved.
Let's, let's refer to Carlos.
With the numbering, so we have to redo.
May, I, thank you, sir. So what happened is that there was a combining of the actual item, if you look on the agenda, 16.04 and 16.05. They put the heading of 16.04 and the body of 16.05, so we need to separate them out. So the request from the chair is that if we could return back to 16.04 to clarify, you're going to do a 16.04 and you're going to do a 16.05. They're going to be two distinct motions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I thought.
It was a clerical error.
16.02, and I was giving, going back to that one.
Understood, and it's our apologies.
It's 16.04.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Student trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton? Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Oden?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now we move to 16.05 Resolution Number 061225-3 Appropriations Subject to Proposition 4, Which Are GAN Limitations. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 061225-3?
Second.
Which establishes the 2025, 2026 GAN limitations for College of the Desert at $92,431,519 as presented. Is there any discussion? We have a motion, do we get a second?
Yes, we did, yes.
All right.
Student trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton? Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Oden?
Thank you, sir. Now we can return back to 17.02.
Okay, so we return to Item 1702 Capital Projects Report per Resolution 012122-3. President Martinez Garcia, could you please help introduce this item?
I'd like to call Mr. Robert Roush up to the, Roush, you're up to the podium. Who will help us with this item.
That looks right. There we go. Good morning, trustees, Mr. President, executive team. It's good to be with you. I will be brief. I know you've got quite a day ahead of you. Our bimonthly report for this month is going to show you progress all the way across the board. The Palm Springs Development Project is moving forward at a great clip now that we have full approval from the Division of the State Architect for the increment to plans and specifications. At this point, we have no further restraints from DSA and we're moving forward at full speed. So that's great news. Roadrunner Motors similarly is moving forward at a good pace. I've mentioned in the past that we had some challenges with one of our neighbors at that property and we've been able to move past those issues and create the retaining walls necessary to establish the site and get the grading all leveled out. So we are now moving forward with getting the, the site actually built to the specifications for that building pad to be received. The athletic stadium project is highly visible now on campus. If you drive by, you will see all kinds of steel and masonry rising into the air as we build the new stadium building. I'm very excited to see how quickly that's coming along. And I'm pleased to report that the, the soil and earthwork that needed to be done for the football field and the soccer field has also been proceeding very well. We had to do special treatment of the soil to make it. We had to do special treatment of the soil to make it more enriched so that the grass would grow better once we've got the new fields in, and that has proceeded as planned. The science building renovation project, to be perfectly candid with you, has been a bit of a roller coaster dealing with some midstream redesign of the HVAC system in the building. But we've got that resolved now, and we're moving forward. And we're working with, to be fair, a very dedicated contractor who's helping us recover that time. The Indio Project, the Indio Campus Expansion, both the new Building B and the renovations to Building A are now complete. We are working on minor warranty issues that have cropped up in the last couple of months just to make sure that things are tick-tock and everything's working properly over there. But the project is complete, and we hope to finish all the DSA paperwork on that in the next month or two. That takes us to a new one, the Indio Surface Parking Project. This is a project that's being done in partnership with the City of Indio immediately to the east of the existing Indio Center. This is a very straightforward project. It is surface parking with electric vehicle charging stations and, of course, the legally mandated accessible parking stalls that you would expect. We've got beautiful landscaping and stormwater retention built into this project as well. And this is currently in review with DSA's office in San Diego. So we hope to start bidding sometime this summer, when they give us approval. And that's it. That's our docket for today. Any questions?
Could you move back to that slide I just wanted, so the public could see? Thank you. Active projects. So I see all the different acting projects. So I see the Palm Springs, that includes that Palm Springs Development Project.
Mm-hmm.
So it's just kind of giving you an outline. These are the only active projects we have currently? That's it?
In fact, some of these are projects that were put into an act of state some time ago and have been waiting for further direction, but may or may not move forward.
Okay.
As you all detail priorities to President Martinez Garcia.
So these are, maybe in the future, to tell the public, these are our projects to be, maybe label them and say, some of them. I would like to, I think, these are taxpayers' money. So making sure that we tell the taxpayers, this is what we're doing, and kind of make it, you know, these are our measure B. I love that, very clear. When the public looks at this, is it in our, I know when you go to our webpage and it says bond, is it right in front and very easily to be seen, this number?
This particular table is not, at the moment, in a prominent location. What we have on the website is really more focused on the projects themselves.
Okay.
So we show pictures of the status and stuff like that. But I hear what you're saying, trustee Sanchez Fulton. And I wonder if maybe we can work with staff to try to incorporate that.
Yeah, because this is our taxpayers' money when, you know, these are millions of dollars that we did ask the tax, you, me, all of us, to pay for. And just having that, maybe, just if we can do that. And this is a big feat, and we're moving right along with their money. So making sure, I just also want to commend the taxpayers again, always supporting the College of the Desert and pushing our projects for the future of our students.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
1703, Chapter 2 Administrative Procedures. President Martinez Garcia, could you please provide context for Board Item 17.03?
Yes, be happy to. Thank you. We have continued our review of Board Policies and Administrative Procedures, and the items presented to you today are for information. For information, complete the review of Chapter 2 Admin Procedures. Two Board Policies from this chapter remain currently under Board Level Review. Once finalized, the review cycle for Chapter 2 will be complete, and we will begin reviewing Chapter 3 next year during the 2025-26 Academic Year.
Thank you, President Martinez Garcia.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Oden. So I see the district general is reviewing Chapter 2. You said two, so that means that we have, I just, just for the record, we completed Chapter 2, Val, is this what you're saying? And then we're going to go into the other, I'm going into other parts. So student, all of these have been now reviewed? Just please clarify that.
Yes, they've all been reviewed, and we are ready to move on to Chapter 3. We have two Board Policies that remain under Board Level Review. So you still have to approve those.
Okay.
And then will be completed, then moving to Chapter 3.
Which two here?
I'm not familiar with which specific ones we have not approved yet. We can get back to you, though.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Are there any others? Okay, thank you. Move on to Number 18, Information Administrative Services 1801, Update on Amendment Number 1 With Asseture, Infrastructure, and Capital Projects for Palm Springs Development Project. There's no action required on information items, however, if there are any questions from the Board.
No.
Okay, same. And then we move to Public Comments, 1901. Request to address the Board regarding matters not on the agenda. Remote public participation is allowed and will be accepted in person by email or at collegeofthedesert.edu during the meeting and submit it for the record, or by using the Raise Your Hand function by joining the Zoom link pursuant to the District Administrative Procedure 2345. Each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes per topic. Fifteen minutes shall be the maximum time allotted for public speakers on any one subject, regardless of the number of speakers at any one time in the Board meeting. At the discretion of the majority of the Board, these limits may be extended. All comments must be submitted or brought forward prior to the end of the public comment session. On addition note, this item is intended for members of the public for which to speak regarding matters not related to the agenda.
Vice Chair Oden, at this time, we have not received any public comments, and I'm taking a quick look on Zoom. It looks like we also don't have any remote requests to address the Board right now.
Okay, thank you. So we move to Future Agenda Items. Trustee James?
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Yes, I do. Having attended the two-by-two meetings in Indio City with the city officials and the city officials of Desert Hot Springs, when I attended and I saw how beneficial it was to discuss the Coachella Valley and our expansions for the College of the Desert with the local officials, it was so valuable, so insightful, to have Val there and to hear what we're doing and their input and their recommendations and the strategic partnerships we have with city officials. I think it would be so, how could I say, wonderful, not wonderful, but insightful, to push our relationships with the other elected Board of Trustees from the K through 12. Let me give you an example. Having attended the Indio graduation representing the College of the Desert, the president of the Board of Trustees for Desert Sands Unified said, "I would like, we have two-by-twos with city officials. Can we have a two-by-two with College of the Desert?" So I know we're busy, and I know, but it would be so important to have, because of our dual enrollment, and we want to expand in the best interest of the College of the Desert, to have two-by-twos with trustees of Desert Sands, Coachella Valley, and Palm Springs Unified. It came from them and our community, and I would like to see if my Board of Trustees would be interested in partaking in a two-by-two with other Board of Trustees in the K through 12. Just, I wanted to just do a Future Agenda Item to discuss this. Second of all, I would, I want to really...
Trustee Sanchez Fulton, I would like to co-sponsor that with you.
Oh.
Because I have had conversations. I've not had conversations. I've had comments from them as well, and I think it's an excellent idea.
Okay. I think it would be great. Also, would like to see, thank you. I would like to see also our tiny homes. I still want to get an update. I think it's wonderful. Want to know where we're at on that. I also, the hall pass, I keep on mentioning that hall pass. It's so critical that we are talking about that and get more information on that. And finally, just to follow up, I would like to see some numbers on our Learning Center in Desert Hot Springs. I think it's so critical because that's the city I represent and live. I've been hearing a lot, a lot of my students tell me, it's at night. I just want to see more lighting. Also, I think it would be wonderful to have a big sign at Desert Hot Springs, at our Learning Center. People email me, where is the college? So I think it would, just to get maybe an update on signage or where we're at, or, I don't know. Thank you.
I can give a quick update on that if you want. So the Desert Hot Springs sign we proofed just two weeks ago. It's in fabrication right now, and the goal, we've negotiated with them where that sign will go. And the goal is that by the end of July, that sign will be installed. We will, we're going to notify Superintendent President Martinez Garcia so that we can coordinate with the Board to be present and/or be part of that. So that sign is in progress. And I put down the note about lighting. So I'll follow up with, we don't own that area. We don't own that district, but we can look with them and see if there's ways that we can augment lighting if that's an issue in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's the safety, yes.
Trustee Meyer?
Thank you.
I have nothing.
I don't have anything at this time. We will now turn to closed session.
You'll recess to closed session?
Recede. Well, at 12 o'clock. About 30. Or 45.
Thank you.
I have to open this. We will be extending closed session. And we'll reconvene to report out any information if we need to at that time. Thank you.
...
We'll reconvene to open session. We don't have anything to report out at this time. And so we will adjourn the regular meeting of the District Committee of College District Board of Trustees at 1:47 PM.